Seven o'clock on Monday, February thirteenth, uh, excuse me, six thirty P M., I gotta get used to that. On Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, I hereby call the regular meeting of the Gardner School Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mrs. Cormier.
Present.
Mrs. Hurst.
Present.
Mr. LaFreniere.
Present.
Mrs. Layton.
Present.
Mrs. Pulavin.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mayor Nicholson.
Present.
Superintendent Pellegrino.
Present.
Amber Cameron.
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, item B, open time for the general public. Is there anyone here from the general public who wishes to be heard? Seeing none, moving on. If there's no objections, we'll take item F out of order to accommodate Ms. Cameron's schedule for the Student Advisory Board update. Ms. Cameron.
Um, so first in sports, the boys' basketball, um, won first little league in over thirty years, and they also qualify for states now. Our boys' hockey team qualifies for state playoffs for the second year in a row. And we just sent four students to the Midwatch Student Leadership Sporting Event, and that's all we really have for sports. But in other news, on January fourth, at the alumni panel, we brought graduates in to talk about their college experience and share that with juniors and seniors. Um, and we had over one hundred people attend the open house for early college at the Mount, so that was a very big success. We held our annual student success assembly where upperclassmen share some of the struggles that they may have experienced throughout high school, and they can give advice to our lower classmen on how they overcame those struggles. Um, we raised about sixty dollars for the Heart Foundation, and this is when students can go in during their lunches, and they can buy these little heart notes that get sent out to their peers. That will be on Wednesday. And it's fifty cents for a heart, and then another fifty cents if you want to add a little lollipop. Um, we are currently in our winter fun week, and this is just a nice way to leave on a positive note before our February break. Today was Decades Day, tomorrow is Nationality Day, Wednesday is Teacher-Student Swap Day, Thursday is Barbecue Dad Plus Soccer Mom Day, and Friday is Black and Orange Day to represent our school colors. And that is all we have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns for Ms. Cameron? Yes, Attorney Polaven.
Barbecue Dad. Um, I don't know. It involves jean shorts and white sneakers with high socks and a tuck-in polo.
Weekend, uh. All right, thank you very, oh, quiet. Thank you very much, Ms. Cameron.
Thank you.
Uh, moving back to the regular items on the agenda, item C, recognitions of the superintendent.
Tonight, I have no recognitions.
All right, moving on. Item D, the consent agenda. This was included in your packet. Uh, we'll make note that there was a Scrivener's error on page five of the January third, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. In the final conclusion, it says the State of the City address will take place on January fourth. That was January tenth. And any motion to do that will have those minutes as corrected with that note made.
Move to accept as amended.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Ms. Ward-Layton, uh, to approve the consent agenda as presented and with that amendment noted. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E, Subcommittee Report, Finance Subcommittee, Mr. LaFreniere.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The, uh, Finance Subcommittee met on January twenty-sixth. Um, we reviewed the expense report. Um, a few lines are in the negative. Everything's gonna be balanced out. Uh, that would include like substitute teachers, um, at the end of the year, existing funds will be, uh, used to get that back in where it should be in the black. Um, also, the electricity is noted, still a battle. Um, it's noted that it's, uh, still a fight with the contractor in the subs. Um, it should be slowing down soon. Uh, they're still trying to balance out, um, the system. It's supposed to be super efficient. We'll get there. Um, but the, make note that the negatives only due to the, uh, incumbent amounts and not the actual spend. And we've been using budgeted money in the construction account to offset some of this. Uh, let's see, out of district tuition. This is connected to the next one. All right. We've had a few expensive students move in, including, uh, a blind student and one that needs a one-on-one, uh, nurse. Budgeting this count is a little, uh, like pinning jello to the wall, as we, so to speak. Um, this happens every once in a while, every few years, and it's, it's completely out of our control. Um, but we will definitely, uh, support those students as we should and get them whatever they need. Watkins Fields concession restroom work is ongoing, and the interior work should be wa- wrapped up in February. Uh, for the final grading and paving will take place in the spring. And that was pretty much it.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. LaFreniere, moving on to the Policy Subcommittee. Mrs. Hurst.
Uh, the Policy Subcommittee met on, uh, February second. Um, we had nine policies that we went through that, um, would just be, uh, updated and as reviewed. Um, still turn out in line things with N A F C. Um, and we have, uh, three tonight for, um, first reading. It's in your packet. Um, so that's really about it.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to discussion items, new business, item number three, four, seven, five, first reading of policies for information. B D B B, duties of the vice, of the vice chairperson. B D F A E three, conduct of school council business, and B D B, budget planning. This is for informational purposes. Questions, comments, concerns? If not, we'll be moving on to item number three, four, seven, six, Program of Studies for Information. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, the, um, the Program of Studies is in your packet. Paula did talk about some of the changes to the Program of Studies. I don't know if you have any questions or you'd like further information.
I think Paula will be coming in the March meeting to answer any questions when we vote on the acceptance to the changes.
Perfect. Glad you said that.
Yeah, just like the policies, we put it out for information one meeting, and then it's voted on at the next meeting after that. Item number three, four, seven, seven, School Improvement Plans, Gardner Academy. Principal McMaro.
Good evening, folks, and everybody at home. Um, so brevity has been my mantra. So I know that everybody can read, so instead of reading every line of my presentation, I'm just gonna do a recap of the, uh, the information. Um, as I have up here, we do have a pretty big deal going on. Uh, there's been a lot that has been taking place. Uh, we have a brand-new space this year, really function heavy on our M T S S systems for academics and S E L. Um, as always, our equity and parent engagement and community engagement is a focus for us. Uh, with the new space, we were lucky that it can help us build new climate and culture and routine. Worked great. Uh, new location has given us a great opportunity, and for climate and culture of our school, we've been able to reset. Uh, we've been able to create, uh, new and existing routines, in particular, things along the labs, the cafeteria, how we move. Uh, one of the advancements that we had, besides just having a gym and auditorium now, which I'm really excited about, uh, is really the intercom system has given us an opportunity to set up a transition that works very well for our students, which is important for our students because having routine and being as slow as we can every single day, uh, really has worked out. Um, we had a lot of cleaning up to do. That's done. Um, thank you to the central office. And, uh, we also have, uh, our building has had a couple of snags, but nothing that we couldn't, uh, get over. Um, as far as our, um, went the wrong way, I apologize. Our climate cultural routine specifically, um, focused on the needs of our students, like I said, our calf, our labs. One of the biggest things we did this year was we made a five-day schedule. The past few years, we had four days of academic, and then the fifth day was a day for electives. It was a much longer day. Uh, we started taking a look at that data and attendance. Uh, it really was starting to, to wait. It was something that was, we, we realized was becoming kind of antiquated. So we changed it to a five-day schedule. So it was the same kind of day, Monday to Friday. Uh, that's actually giving the kids more, um, routine. It's more solid process. We're noticing it in our attendance, along with other things we've been focusing on for attendance, and something that's really helped out a lot. We've been able to put our, our electives in the actual school day as opposed to waiting till the end. That way the kids see the value of school every single day, and that was a big piece for us. We established a morning meeting to where we meet every single day and discuss things about what's going on. We discuss what comes over from the high school, college board stuff, things that's going on in colleges, um, issues that we have, things that we have for concerns, things that we're doing well. Uh, we also discuss, uh, the question of the day and the M C A S question of the day, uh, this day in history, all for students to use in classes for extra points. Uh, but in particular, it's a way for students to have student voice. Uh, we do, uh, consider a, a movement that we have in our building called the Power of Yes. And if there's something that students really feel strongly about that they want to do, they can bring it up to us. And as long as it's reasonable, uh, they get the chance to do it because it's their school too. And it's a really powerful tool that we've had. We've had some really good success with it. Uh, we did get a chance to create a Student Advisory Board this year. We meet weekly, and that's really, again, for student voice. Um, they sit in on policy with us. They sit with me, and we make sure that if there is something that they want changed, like, for example, they wanted to, um, see if we couldn't, if we meet certain attendance goals, can we go bowling? Well, okay, sure, we can figure that one out. Uh, so the attendance stuff is something that we were working on really heavily. Next slide. In our S E L updates, we've done a lot. Uh, we've been tracking the, we've emphasized particularly on attendance this year. Uh, we set three different attendance goals. Uh, the first goal is just to hit eighty percent attendance one week. We did. The other goal was to hit eighty percent attendance for two weeks with no day under seventy-five. We hit that last Friday. Uh, so hence the bowling might be coming in. And then our final goal was that if we can get eighty-five percent attendance for two weeks with eighty-five percent classroom attendance, uh, we're gonna do a, where we have trips planned, but we might get a specific trip to Boston for the students. Uh, and they're really, they're really immediate. Uh, we've incorporated a sign inside-out sheet to where students, um, are in class, leave class, come back in four minutes, we, we put their name to a raffle for, they put them once for a raffle. If they stay in class the whole time, they put their names in twice, and they're small gifts. Um, we're thinking about, uh, in our S E L practices, setting up things, um, we haven't figured out the exact name, but having them earn an equivalent of dollars that they could buy from a school school, uh, all to plan on incentives. And part of that comes out of our P V I S system that we've been using. Uh, we have had established our expectations, be here, be ready, be engaged, be honest. Uh, we put those in every single thing we do, every single space. Uh, we're actually, our next phase of this is planning lessons and showing them how we can teach them what that means in classes and what it means all over the different schools, or all over the school building, I should say. Um, we've been working with May Institute. Our P V I S, as I said, has, um, really helped our population a lot. It's more positive in response than just trying to force them to get into class. We try to force them to do work. They actually see the value of earning work and see the value of achieving on their own. Um, our tier two and tier three advancements that we have, uh, we do have a pretty solid method now. I won't say it's all in place. We have a pretty solid method now of using data and using our different, uh, interventions to meet those kids' needs. Uh, and then our classroom support system, which is something that is district-wide. Uh, we were lucky enough that the people at the May Institute, um, actually work with us, persons there once a week, uh, in helping us create these systems. And, um, she's doing the work for a classroom support system, which is positive reinforcement, um, chances for students to respond, things along those natures. So they actually watch the teachers and see how they do and see, and not, not value it, but to give them feedback on things that they can change to make the classroom a little friendly. Our academic updates, um, we have been working with our M T S S academic data. We do data dives. Every single day, we have an M T S S meeting, but we do our data dives particularly on Monday. Uh, we've been combining that with our Common Planning Time template, which we are using throughout the district in utilizing not only how we look at it and see where the gaps are, but how we're gonna plan for it, how we're gonna plan to fill those gaps, and how we're gonna keep standards high and meet the expectations that we have, as opposed to just try to give them something to, say, here, you've reached a sixty or a fifty, actually, seventy, actually trying to, to fill in the real need that they have. The other kids do come to us with some pretty significant skill gaps through time loss in particular. Um, school-wide approach to common planning. Uh, we meet as a team. We actually have been talking about how we would approach given in-class questions. What's neat about us is instead of meeting as a single department where everybody's an expert in the discipline, uh, we have people that don't know necessarily one-hundred percent how they would answer certain questions. And it gives us a chance to get some really deep, rich, um, discussion, and we get the opportunity to plan together. Um, this is all, it's not so much new as much as it's been revitalized and been refocused, and there's been a lot of work on that. Uh, we still continue to work with Mount Wachusett through Gateway. We're also partnered, like you've heard from Paula already. Uh, we're on that grant. We're on a lot of stuff that we do. Uh, it's been pretty exciting. We've actually, uh, worked well with our, um, early college coordinator. Uh, we just recently, uh, were able to, um, get a connection to an automotive tech program at Mount Wachusett. Many of our kids wanted to do it. Two of our kids are ever qualified to do it. They've been going every Tuesday and Friday. Um, it's been really positive response to them, and they see the value of where it's, it's not just school as much as there's other things out there that they can do. And this is a continued, as I said, we've had several of those students. As we're looking to the future, uh, we've been focused on timelines to create a standards-based, competency-based type grading system. Uh, the driver for this, for us, is going to be through project-based, um, learning. It's more, it's not necessarily a traditional way to go. At the same time, uh, we're able to get kids to show us that they've mastered certain standards and be able to do other pieces while having a, um, strong sense of group work and more importantly, being able to piece together themselves and a part of the project to see the learnings in a larger space than just math, English, science. In other words, they, you know, go to English when English is done, turn off the English brain, turn on the math brain. Project-based learning kind of adds that. We're already heterogeneously grouped, so it just makes sense that that's the next step. Um, it's gonna take a little while, but we are already, um, discussing these, and we see the few models that actually also have a, um, gateway component to it as a guideline, and we're excited and wanting to try and move forward with that. Uh, Equity and Parent Community Engagement, uh, we've always worked hard to, uh, expand on our parent council. Uh, we've linked our Facebook page with several of our communities', uh, pages in Gardner and Grady Gardner communities, uh, to increase our exposure to the public but also their exposure. Um, and finally, we, we started a bi-weekly email to both students and parents to let them know what's going on in our school, almost like a newsletter, um, without being a whole newsletter. Uh, technology allows us to do that, but at the same time, it's a chance for parents to see what's going on internally, see what we're doing, get a chance to get an idea, and then come to parent councils and participate in it, um, and making sure that we have a greater partnership with our parents on how we, um, communicate and how they can actually help us shape their students' education. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. McMaro.
Have you received any feedback from parents on the newsletter?
A, a little bit. Um, it, it's kind of funny. Most of the parents have been using it as a tool of, hey, I need this, or hey, I need that, but that's great. It's, they're doing that as opposed to not getting it. Uh, but at the same time, it's pretty new. We started it pretty new. Um, it's kind of like an email blast. When we reinforce it through like one calls and things like that, especially with the kids, um, it should grow. But for right now, it's been pretty good. We do have some parents that contact us. Um, it's more specific need for them.
Okay. Or is it communicating?
They're communicating. And, and again, hopefully, the idea is that, um, you know, we can get more volunteer with, with, we can get more connection through people 'cause, 'cause with the COVID era for my building, um, we were devastated for all of that. So we're everybody's building once, but in particular, our population was hurt pretty heavily. But yes, we're getting communication.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Ward-Layton, Pete.
Yeah.
We got a couple more questions, and that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That's okay. Uh, no, I just wanted to, um, compliment you on the, the idea of the morning meeting, um, every day. I know that it's something that's typically done more with younger students, but I think it's just, it doesn't really matter what age. It's great community building and, um, the student voice and choice is really just, and if you're saying that the kids are more engaged and that they're getting excited, it's because of those things, of relationships being built. So it's just great stuff to hear.
Bye. Thank you.
Um, I recently saw, um, on Facebook, some of those students, they got certificates.
It was, yes.
And, um, that was really nice to see.
That was the first time since two thousand nineteen we were able to do that. We were really happy about it.
Yeah, no, it, it's good to get other people aware what's going on there. I personally would also love to see a student representative here from, from Galt.
Yep. We've been talking about that, so.
Keep that in mind.
Let's get the voice and choice in first, and then we'll get them, uh, through there. But that is always, that's always been a goal. That's always.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much, Ms. Pellegrino.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item number three, four, seven, eight, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, School Choice Acceptance. There's a vote required on this one?
Yes. So basically, um, in order to, for virtual schools, um, they have a cap of, oh, is that what we're talking about?
No school choice.
Oh, just school, uh, regular school choice. Thank you for, you're keeping me in line tonight, Ms. Polaven. I really appreciate that. Um, uh, for school choice, this just allows us to, um, continue to accept, um, school choice. So you've done, school committee does need to vote on this every year.
Move to participate in school choice.
Motion made by Attorney Polaven, seconded by Mrs. Hurst, to participate in school choice for the upcoming school year. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Two seconds.
I, there was like three different of them.
I'm sorry, who, who made that motion?
Jen Polaven made the motion. I, I said Ms. Hurst, but there was like three others who said it, so I'm sure whoever, anybody's gonna find it.
Any of them, one of them would say.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say.
Continue with school choice.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, seven, nine, the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three School Committee Schedule of Meetings. Uh, you'll notice in your packet, this is an amendment to the original calendar that was voted on last year for our meeting schedule, basically changing our meeting time for the rest of the year from seven P M. to six thirty P M.
Move to accept.
Is there a second? Motion made by Attorney Polaven, seconded by Ms. LaFreniere, to accept the change in our calendar for the rest of the school year. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, zero, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, School Committee Schedule of Meetings. This is the calendar for the upcoming school year, beginning in September through June of twenty-four.
Move to accept.
Which one?
This is the School Committee Calendar, not the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So just the one that's in your packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, I'll get you this time, Rachel. Motion made by Attorney Polaven, seconded by Mrs. Cormier, uh, to accept the calendar as presented in the packet. All those in favor, say, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, one, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, Annual School Calendar. Dr. Pellegrino.
Dr. Gogan, actually, will, will take over, and unfortunately, I'm having some technical difficulties, so I cannot bring up the, uh, PowerPoint that, um, Dr. Gogan made.
I spent hours on that PowerPoint. No, I just wanted to give you a look, some highlights. You do have a copy of Option One and Option Two calendars in your packet. But just for, for everyone else, a summary of that. Um, Option One includes the first day for staff to be Thursday, August twenty-fourth, for professional development, three days. Um, and then the first day for students would be Wednesday, August thirtieth, which is before the Labor Day weekend. And the last day of stu- school for students, barring any snow days, would be Friday, June seventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Option Two is, uh, a first day for staff professional development on Monday, August twenty-eighth, and the first day for students would be on that Tuesday after Labor Day weekend, which is September fifth. That puts the last day of school barring any snow days up, a few days out, which would be June twelfth of twenty twenty-four for all students in the district. I know this year it's, it's a little bit tricky because we have students in the middle in high school getting out a little bit earlier, and with four snow days already, we're, we're creeping up to the end of June. So we wanted to have a calendar with options that allowed us to be out of school earlier so that if we do have several snow days, we'll still be in good shape. Uh, so we did do a survey through our Power School out to all families. We also sent an email out to all staff members in the district, and the results show that we had a pretty even split of staff to families who responded with a total of about four hundred and.
Fifty-four.
Four hundred fifty-four, yes. And some of those, some of those people were both staff members and parents. We had, uh, a, a really nice representation from all schools for our staff members. Um, so I had a nice little graph showing you that. And we also had, um, the final results of that, which was Option One versus Option Two, was very close. Option Two, which is the later start date after Labor Day, was the survey winner with fifty-three percent of the vote and forty-seven percent of the vote being the, the Option One, which is before Labor Day weekend. So that's the information I have. I will leave it to you all for, um, consideration, discussion, and a vote. Does anybody have any questions about the calendars or the survey?
Well, I just want to make note that, uh, 'cause we said this at the last School Committee meeting, the October ninth holiday is listed jointly this year as both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's new to our calendar this year. And even with the longer end to the school year this year, for some of our students, we are still recognizing the new state and federal Juneteenth holiday as a day off from school as well, both this year and.
Which I believe falls on a Monday this coming year. Does that sound right?
Sorry, Kathy.
Yeah.
Did you, um, was, did you separate, though, the staff, like, what the staff wanted compared to parents?
Um, I did separate it, but I don't have it in this presentation, but I can get you that information.
I was just curious if it was, do you remember whether it was the same outcome?
Yeah, it was similar. It was, the numbers weren't fifty-three, forty-seven, but it was still a higher number with Option Two than Option One.
All right. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to accept Option Two. Second.
Second. Motion made by Attorney Polaven, seconded by Ms. Ward-Layton, to accept Option Two with the September fifth start date to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, two, Stop Arm Cameras on Buses Request to the State Delegation. Dr. Pellegrino.
Um, actually.
Um, so Bob Schwartz had brought this to my attention, that, um, in some of the other school districts, there, um, is some concern about how to handle people who are not stopping for the buses. And this would be to put cameras somewhere on the bus, or at least utilize cameras that may already be there um, in order to send fines to people if they do run past the bus when the red flashing lights are on. Um, I actually just read an article today that a new bill was filed recently, um, that will help with the enforcement piece of it 'cause I guess there's some disconnect there in how that would work. So, um, this is more just for us to, um, have a motion that, saying we're asking our state delegates to advocate for the bill or file a new bill, similar to the bill that had been filed last year. And as I said, a new bill did, was filed. I think it was in the past week or so, um, regarding the stop arm cameras on the buses.
Is there a motion on the floor?
One second.
Is that the motion to be made? Okay. Is there a second? Yeah.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Attorney Polaven, to request this of the State Delegation. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, three, Letter of Partnership for the After Dark Program.
So this is actually a, a program, um, I'm, I'm pretty excited about. Uh, we're working with Monty Tech right now to.
Uh, we're working with Monty Tech right now to, what's typically an after dark program, but it's actually a program that'll be during the school day. And so we're, um, we're, we have a grant to plan this out. So right now, we're not even sure if it's feasible. Um, but this, um, this letter would allow us to continue moving forward, planning this, to see if, um, if we can do this. We're doing this with, Pittsburgh's also doing it, as is Narragansett with, uh, with Monty Tech. And there's two programs. There's one that's an, um, electrician program, and then there's a construction program. So both of those programs would allow, um, some of our juniors and seniors, similar to our early college program, basically. Kids would go to Monty Tech in a, um, in a different building other than the main building. Um, and they would actually get training in one of those two fields. Um, and then they'd, they'd eat lunch with us. They're still considered one hundred percent a Gardner student. So the funding, we're not even really sure a hundred percent how this works. We actually think we'd get the chapter seventy, um, seventy-four money, which would go to Monty Tech to pay for their portions of it. So we're trying to figure out, well, how will this all work? How will this impact budgets? Is this feasible, affordable, when the grant goes away? Those are all things, um, we have another, bam, to be, another planning meeting coming up this Tuesday. Um, but it does look like an exciting program, and I don't want to, to pass this by without giving it its full, um, due.
Man, I think, I thought I also read in the air that, uh, there was no more than two percent of a school population allowed to participate in this program.
That's the next, that's the next item, um, which is the virtual school.
Oh, okay.
Which is what I almost jumped ahead to before. That's what I was dealing with, like, technical difficulties.
So what are you looking for this point, like, um?
So, so we, there's a letter, um, to be signed by the chair of the school committee that would go in with the, the grant to apply for the planning grant for this, um, for this program.
So it'd be a motion to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the school committee?
So, I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Wardley, and seconded by Mr. Schwartz. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, four, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, enrollment in virtual school. Dr. Pellegrino.
So this is a very awkwardly worded, uh, um, uh, um, reg- regulation. So basically, every year, if we want to cap the virtual enrollment, of this, this, the enrollment for virtual schools, Massachusetts Virtual Schools, you have to vote to cap it at one percent. Otherwise, it will actually be capped at two percent. Um, there's some questions on this. We actually contacted the state to just, for some clarification, because it didn't quite make sense the way it read. Um, I actually consulted with a, an attorney, um, and she found, um, it just seemed very confusing. Um, so right now, if you want to cap the enrollment for virtual schools at one percent of our, um, of our population, you have to vote to cap it. Otherwise, if you choose not to vote, or you choose to, um, not act on this, then it will be capped at two percent.
Is this only at the high school level?
No.
Uh, virtual school, no.
No, it's not.
No.
I, I just did, did you want to mention too that that virtual school means that because it's a public school and attitude chooses, it's considered school choice? So that would be school choice out for us? So it's more of a.
And, and interestingly, that's a great point. And interestingly, it's eight, eight thousand five hundred dollars for school choice to a virtual school.
And I think in the past, right, it was that they used to say that it would cap at the one percent if we didn't vote on it. But now they're, it's, Dussie sort of changed what they're saying and asking us to vote to cap it at the one percent, where in the past it was one percent. So, um, I move that we set the cap at one percent.
Motion made by Attorney Palavin, seconded by Mrs. Hurst, to set the cap for this enrollment at one percent of our school's population. Is there any discussion on the motion, Attorney Palavin?
Yeah, it, it says this is something that we're required to participate in, though. As long as we have school choice, we have to.
No, it's not even, it's not even whether or not we do school choice. We are, we are automatically, kids can automatically go to this program because it's school choice out. So even if we don't accept school choice, kids can go other places.
Right.
For school choice.
Okay.
So there is a, could be a possibility of no one participating at all or applying?
Yes.
Okay.
TACA is one of them in.
Right. We're around one percent right now. Yeah, this was, um. It was in the. Twenty twenty-one. Yeah. It was twenty-five students and one point oh four percent. Yep. But yeah, TACA is one of them, and I forget what the other one.
Yes.
Oh, GRE or Commonwealth Virtual School.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number three, four, eight, five, college and career readiness coordinator update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on the update? Dr., uh, Mr. Schwartz.
Um, the report writer, Melissa Payne, she's the college and career readiness coordinator. Um, it's good to see that there are twenty-four, uh, applications already. Eight more seats are available. Hope everybody, somebody's listening. And there are, for a total of thirty-two early college seats. Program closes on February seventeenth, but the report says that, well, they'll hold the seats open as, until it gets filled. I hope, I hope more kids apply. The Gateway Pathways, which Peter, uh, McMorro alluded to, who received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to support this program. And, and also with the auto tech program at MDA, at the Mount Wachusett Community College, and the healthcare pipeline at Mount Wachusett Community College and Pittsburgh State University. Could Dr. Pellegrino maybe elaborate a little more on the healthcare program?
Sure. What, what did you want, what did you want to?
Well, just what does it entail?
So H, so this allows kids to actually, um, to get, um, a CNA certification. That's what they're moving to, but it's also getting them ready so they could actually go right onto nursing. Um, so it's preparing kids in high school so they can, basically, start their careers earlier.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on this update? Moving on to item number three, four, eight, six, curriculum coordinators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on the update? Thank you very much, Dr. Gogan. Item number three, four, eight, seven, director of school health services update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Schwartz.
It's good to see that, uh, Nurse McCaffery, um, let us know what's going on relative to the health in the school district. I think it's very good that she does that. And interesting to note that, that as of this school year, I think it was this school year, the nurses have seen fourteen hundred and eighty-four students and administered eight hundred and eighty-two medications. But the main point is ninety percent of those kids have gone back to the classroom. I think that's fantastic. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Item number three, uh, three, four, eight, eight, English language learner's coordinator update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion? Moving on to item number three, four, eight, nine, grant administrators update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on this item? Moving on, item number three, four, nine, zero, special education update. This was included in your packet for information. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Schwartz.
And Joyce West's report, uh, she talks about a survey that was done. And one of the things that I took note of, that, uh, with the special education parents advisory committee, was that a lot of parents want to know what this is about. And, uh, I was thinking about that, and I have a suggestion that I can't rely on a Guardian News anymore, because it's no longer a local paper. But maybe what could be done is that, uh, Joyce and Lori Davis, who's the chair of the CPAC, is make a presentation on GE TV, Channel Eight. And, uh, and then we turn it into a Gardner YouTube event. And that way, they could have information as to what the CPAC is about. And whenever the parents happen to want to get on Channel A TV and the YouTube thing to look at something, they might be more enticed to join the committee and provide some good input. Just my suggestion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Moving on to item number three, four, nine, one, special education parents advisory council update. Mrs. Hurst.
Um, I hadn't heard back from Lori Davis. And, um, so the CPAC stuff is also in Joyce's, um, report, so we'll just go with that.
All right. Moving on to item number three, four, nine, two, Massachusetts School Building Authority, new school building project update. Dr. Pellegrino.
It's going as planned. It's quieter right now at the school, so things are going very well.
Excellent. Questions, comments, concerns? Moving on to item H, communications. Dr. Pellegrino.
All I have to say is go Wildcats. I'm really excited about tonight's game, more so than I was last night's game, that's for sure. So, um, I, I, who won last night's game, do we know? Super Bowl?
No. Arizona, they don't care.
Chiefs won.
Was it Chiefs?
Kansas City.
Kansas City.
I hope the girls are doing well as we speak.
I, we might be done. I think it was a six o'clock game.
Six wasn't six thirty, sorry. Okay. I'm wondering if I can find that out. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to find that out. Anything else I have to say?
We'll get back to you on that. With that said, uh, item I, final comments of the school committee, Ms. Wardley.
Um, just thank you to everyone for, um, for all of, there's a lot of information in this packet this month, but, um, good to see. And, um, thank you to Mr. McMorro for the update and for letting us know about the exciting things going on at the academy. And, um, have a great night.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hurst.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
All right, Ms., uh, Attorney Palavin.
Um, well, happy Valentine's Day. Um, and that's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz.
Same. Happy Valentine's Day.
Ms. LaFreniere.
Oh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mrs. Cormier.
Just thanks to Mr. McMorro for the presentation. I always enjoy hearing things about calls and how they're coming around, so, um, I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. On my end, I just want to wish, uh, break a leg to our choral students at the All-City Chorus Concert that's coming up, uh, pretty soon. Uh, let people know that Prospect Street School will be going on the market for sale this Wednesday. It'll be out for a request for proposal for the next thirty days, um, as required by state law. And the council set a minimum bidding price on that one at a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and lastly, on my end, I just want to wish a congratulations to former Gardner Middle School student Noah Gray, who was a tight end in yesterday's Super Bowl, playing for the Kansas City Chiefs.
Wow. I didn't know that.
They got big gray. He had one catch.
Not yet. No, no, okay.
What was that?
Said he had one catch. It was a good one, so.
He young, too. He has time.
With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
I listen to you. I want it to be a little bit like a pirate, so, you know.